We're gonna go ahead and get started in, wow, it is a new month, half of the year already. So I'm gonna call to order our June 1st, 2021 call work session to order. And I asked the clerk.
I think he's coming down the hall if we speak.
He stepped out, okay. There it goes. Renimis? Okay, I've already called the meeting to order, so we're just waiting on you to call the roll.
Mr. Reynolds? Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
We do have a quorum present. There's nothing I have to discuss tonight, so I'm gonna turn it on over to the city manager's hand, and we'll dive right into the budget amendments.
Really, my only opening comment, Mayor, is not specifically related to this budget, but just to give y'all some updated information on ARPA. We did get a new allocation amount on that on Friday. I'm working now to confirm that that is the final allocation coming from Treasury. I think it will be, but once I get confirmation on that, I will shoot you all an email about that. We are still waiting on continued Treasury guidance on utilizing of those funds. The interim final information is changing daily, and as my understanding from GMA, may continue to change even through the end of July. But we do know that we'll get half of that money in this, before this budget year is finalized, or this calendar year is finalized, and probably before this budget year is finalized. And then the remainder in the next calendar year. But as soon as I have that allocation confirmed, I will let you all know what that is. And as soon as we know for sure what we're able to spend it on, then I will send you all a list to take a look at to determine if it's where y'all wanna go with those items. So I sent you all information on Thursday that included the requested information about what would happen if we eliminated the $25 and up tier on the across-the-board increase. So you all have that. I also got a number that I had last week that I failed to send you all in an email. But one of the questions had been the amount of, or number of meters that had been placed at Central State. These are not necessarily new water meters, and please keep in mind that some buildings have multiple meters on them. But at this point in time, they're currently 79 meters in use on the grounds of Central State Hospital. And some of those, most of those bigger buildings will have multiple meters, depending on whether it's normal potable water, or sprinkler system, or a number of different other places that it could be, that water could be going. But I just wanted to let you all know that information you all receive in your monthly budget reports. The general fund, water and sewer, storm water, and solid waste revenue. The water and sewer revenue that you get in that report has Central State and the regular water and sewer account revenue included in that as well. So I did not get the average salaries determined over the holiday weekend, but I will continue to work on that. I've got the data that I needed to do that now. And I will also send that to you all and compare it to DCA dollars. But I think, if I understood our last conversation correctly, that probably will not really play into this particular budget, but maybe something that we look at maybe in July, in terms of maybe doing some budget amendments. So while we're also trying to decide or determining if we wanna do a contracted salary study. So that's all the new information that I have. I'll entertain any questions that anybody may have in terms of where we are now. Oh, one other thing, Mr. Denuser sent you all the new adoption schedule showing that, just confirming what we talked about last week, in that we now have a hopeful adoption date of June 22nd. Correct. And unless we decide differently based on the conversations and the discussion, the legal ad will be placed for that to be the day that the budget is adopted. But certainly, we can change that depending on where we are. So we can't go any earlier than that, but we can go later if we need to, even if we do like we did a couple of years ago, where we approved the current budget and then amend it from there. Are you all hearing us okay on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
I am. Ms. Chambers?
I am.
Okay.
Reading something like that.
Are there any? Are you at your budget negotiations?
Ma'am?
Are you at your budget negotiations now?
I'm ready for questions.
What did we ever come up with for the council, raise for the council?
I never had any figures recommended on that from anybody, Mr. Mullins. I shared the DCA data, but then never heard any potential figures from there.
I think I asked a question when I was doing one of the meetings for anyone if they had any ideas to get back with me on it, since I had brought it up. But I haven't heard from anybody on it either. But I had some figures in mind myself. And then just based on the information that I saw, and based on the fact that it's been... Ms. Walden, how long you said it's been since we've had a salary increase?
Is she here?
Ms. Walden, can you hear us?
Ms. Walden?
I know it's been, it's been, it's been about 20 years is what I think, the last time I remember it.
Well, December be 21 for me. I knew we haven't had one.
December be 21 for you.
It'd be 24, Ms. Walden. I think she came in at the same rate.
I came, I was there four years when they approved for us to get a raise, 'cause the first four years, we couldn't do anything. And then we did that, and as far as I know, we haven't ever done another one.
You might be...
'Cause this is my fourth year.
Yeah, I know. I think you might be thinking about the raising of retirement, not the council.
Yeah, 'cause I don't...
Yeah, I think that's what you referred to.
I don't recall the council though.
In retirement. Yeah, but we haven't, we haven't had a raise for the council. Ma'am?
Remember anything being done.
She says she don't remember anything being done. I know it's been about 24, 25 years, so I'm just getting ready to put out there to you all what I had in mind. And like I said, this is just me. But I know Hank and I had talked one night after the council meeting, and he mentioned something about, was it 15% or something like that?
We talked about 10 to 15. Actually, we talked about 10, 15, and 20, so...
Yeah, we talked about a lot of different things. After looking at those figures from GMA, I, like I said, this is just me. And we're still not, this is still keeping it below where a lot of the other cities are. But I thought about taking the council from 500 to 800. Mayor pro temp from 600 to 900. And the mayor from, I can't think what it was, but, so it would be like $1,000 a month for the mayor, 900 mayor pro temp, 800 for council members. And those are my thoughts. That's, and then not changing anything else about what we do. That's where I was with it. After 25 years, $300 is not a whole lot of money.
And that's in salary only? You're staying the same with travel and all?
Right, that's in salary only. And like I said, those are my thoughts, up for debate or whatever. It'll probably be another 25 years before it happens. Before it happen again.
Ms. Walden, were you saying something?
I said it probably will be another 25 before anything else gets done.
But also too, you know...
What was the, what was the 20% for us? What percentage is that of a raise?
I didn't even, I didn't even do the percentage at all. I just did a dollar amount.
I can calculate it real quick. If... Where are we now?
We're at $500 a month.
That'd be a...
Be $100.
Huh? You said $100? 300.
Well, I said, you said 20.
Yeah, 20% of 500 be 100.
20% would be just $100.
You're right, I said 20.
Oh, I thought that's...
No, 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 no.
Be about a 60%.
Yeah.
What's your proposal?
And if you take that out over 20 years, that's about 3% per year.
Yeah.
About the cost of living.
About the cost of living.
Let's go back, that'd be like 1% a year, it won't be 3%.
Boo said it'd be about 1%.
It'd be 1% every, at 20 years?
When I first got elected in the late 80s, it was 400.
Okay.
And that's what we got total. I think that included $50 for travel, and it was like 350, I think, was what the amount was. Because I believe we got it all in one check back then. It was not broken out. And, you know, but, but it was listed, because I think there was a stub that came with the check, that listed on there what the travel expense was.
Okay.
It was just listed like that, all in one, one amount.
Well, you were saying in the late 80s, so we talking about approximately...
Right, right. But that's 30, about 30.
30 years ago.
And it was at 5, so...
So it's 30 years?
It changed from 350 or 400, somewhere in there to 500.
To 5, uh-huh.
Right, I'm saying, when you talking about, well, now we talking about approximately 30 years ago.
Yeah.
30 years ago or better, yeah.
I was thinking probably sometime in the 90s is when it probably changed. When did you come on, Boo?
2000.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe sometime in the 90s.
Well, I came on in 97.
So...
Everything remains the same.
So nothing has changed. Jimmy said he came on in 84, and nothing, everything remains the same.
Jordan, while they're figuring, figure yours in.
While we figuring, we go...
Mr. Denise?
I don't have the information in front of me, but I'm thinking that some of the, especially Atlanta area and up above, that they were topping out at like 1,500?
And yeah, they were topping out, and they were topping out a lot. So that's what I said, you know, that, that was just what I came up with. Of course, we can, you know, work around that, do whatever, take it up, take it down, however you want to, but it was like...
Something to start with.
Something to start with, uh-huh. It's like $12,000 a year for the mayor, $10,080 for mayor pro temp, and $9,600 a year for alderman. But like I said, we talking about about 25 to 30 years without a salary increase, so... And I know it's been 25 years since the retirement for council members was increased. I thought I might be pushing my luck if I said, let's take that from 40 to 50. $40 to $50, but that's what's on my mind.
Well, I guess, I guess what you, my little figuring I did was, you talking about out of a $12 million budget, what approximately 12 million ain't?
Yes, sir, almost 13.
About 13 million budget, you wanna talk about by $25,000? You know, that's what we talking about.
Yeah.
Increase?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that would only be for half of this budget, 'cause it could not go into effect until January.
January, right.
Right. So...
Well, I want interest on it then.
We following the state law, Mr. Chambers. You'll have to ask, talk to the Attorney General about that.
Go ahead with me, Mr. Jordan.
What about the retirement, guys? Why you at it?
When's the last time that was touched?
25 years or more ago? It's not like we, you know, we think about ourselves first. We've always, I mean, and we're not even thinking about ourselves first. We've discussed everything else but us, even in this budget cycle. And it could possibly not be any of us anyway, so... You really looking after whoever comes next.
Well, yeah, I think, Council, you wanna go with the numbers Ms. Shinholster put out there, or did anyone else have some numbers yet thought about?
I'm good, 750 or 8, and everything else proportionate.
You all know, in the beginning, Shinholster, when you first said that, I would say to myself, whoa, that's a big jump. But after talking to you all, because I haven't been on as long as you all have been, and after listening to what you all are saying, you know, I really don't see a problem with it personally. We're talking about years and years and years.
Yes.
But I'm telling you, beginning though, when you threw it out there, it kind of blew my mind.
I figured it was, that's why I stumbled around with the conversation a little bit.
Yeah, it really blew my mind, but I didn't say nothing, because I wanted to listen. And everything you all said really justified those figures.
I haven't been here but a small four years, and I got to wondering, woo, how did they make it 20, 30 years?
And I know when we go to the different meetings, and you hear other council members talking about, you know, how much they're getting and stuff, yeah, I mean, they get paid pretty good. I mean...
Some of your other rural counties, like, I mean, cities like...
Yeah, look at those figures that Hank gave us. I was just blown away with it.
I mean, I got laughed at at a couple of meetings when they asked...
No, you didn't get laughed at, I hope.
Yes, I did, yes, I did, but I took it and kept on going.
There was just an article today in the Athens Banner Herald about the salaries of all of their employees and city officials. I think the commissioners up there, of course, it's consolidated government, but the commissioners up there said made anywhere from $19,000 to $20,000 a year.
Where's this?
In Athens. Athens, Clark.
19 to 20,000, mm, mm.
How long have you gotta be a resident to run?
I didn't wanna tell Hank what the city manager might...
He want to say, you look around, ain't nobody in the room. Y'all moving to Athens?
Why don't we just go the figures then that Denise said, the 300 and, and everybody, it would, it would, it would up it 300 for everybody, like the mayor, the mayor pro temp, and the council members. Like you said, it would put us from 5 to 8, and the mayor pro temp 9, mayor 1,000.
What about retirement?
Does that... Well, I mean, I'm willing to up it if everybody else is, but I don't know how much... Jimmy, what kind of details would we have to go through to up the retirement? That would be different from the pay. I think it has to have some...
It would be, except that probably what we would do, because there are some advertising requirements and so forth for the, at least for the salary increase. But in order to, you know, it uses the term salary or compensation of elected members, we would probably do them together. They would have to be two separate ordinances, 'cause one would be amending the pension plan. But we would probably do them and advertise them together so that we're covered. It has to be advertised...
Okay.
Once a week for three weeks, immediately preceding the vote. And it also has to be voted on and approved before the first day of qualifying.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know it does.
So we gotta go down the bar now?
So if, yeah, if you're gonna have it in this budget, and we're looking at possibly approving this budget by the second meeting in June, it needs to get advertised, 'cause it only comes out once a week on Saturdays. Isn't that right?
Okay, then, let's go... Let's go ahead and do it all, and go ahead and do the 50 for the retirees. I mean, for the people on council, 'cause it would only affect the ones that are on council.
Yeah, and the appointed folks.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with it. All right, everybody else, say if you're good or not.
I'm good with it.
Yeah. 10 minutes ago, I am.
Columbia is?
It's forceful.
Yes.
Mullins said that's forceful, that's all that matters. So we will have a vote on that at the...
That, yes, that will actually be, the salary raise will be part of the budget approval ordinance, isn't that correct, Jimmy?
Well, we'd, we would do a separate, I'll look at that, but I think we would do a separate resolution relative to that. But I'll see what we can do. It could, it could be part of that.
Yeah. I'm thinking the pension would have to be a separate resolution, but...
Pension would have to be a separate ordinance.
But building the salary increases into the budget. But obviously, I'll let Jimmy drive that bus.
I think, I think so. But I knew with the pension, there, there's something that you have to do differently. I'm not sure what it is. I'll have to look in my notes from years ago and see. But it's, it's, it's a legal type thing that you have to follow.
Well, we would have our, either I would draw it, or we would have our pension lawyer draw it. But I've already, I've seen the one that we did the last time. Seems like it's, I guess. So that's easy enough to, it's just an ordinance that would require first and second read if it is, if the first read is not waived.
But it would be okay for the salary increases to go ahead and include those in the overall budget figures, correct?
Budget, but we may have to have a separate resolution setting, setting that salary going forward.
Okay. So are you looking at the, trying to get it on the 8th to the 22nd agenda?
I'd hate to get it on the 22nd, but I don't know. You gotta advertise it. Once a week for three weeks, and that third week has to be immediately preceding the week of the vote. At least once a week for three consecutive weeks, immediately preceding the week during which the action is taken.
Can't do that. The Saturdays would be the... Isn't there five, isn't there five Tuesdays in June? Yes. More importantly, the Saturdays for advertising, you could, if we got it in the paper.
This Saturday.
Like tomorrow, we might could get it running on the 5th, 12th, 19th, and adopt on the 22nd.
You'd be pushing for tomorrow, 'cause Tuesdays they cut off. What are they gonna do Saturday?
Pretty much, they do.
On Tuesdays, they asked, they asked us to have anything for Saturday, Saturday for, to them on Tuesday.
In other words, today was the deadline to have something in Tuesday.
It had to be there by 5 o'clock? Today is still Tuesday.
Does the fact that yesterday was a holiday change that at all?
I think we'd have to find that out tomorrow, but I don't know. I can absolutely...
I can absolutely talk with Amy tomorrow and see.
Do you email it or you?
Email it.
Do you email your information to them?
Correct, and then she works up the block ad.
Well, if you worded that email today and send it off since today is Tuesday, and then ask her to contact you in the morning.
That's all. I would contact her in the morning. I don't, if we have everything kind of in place and where she doesn't have too much work on it. We might, probably could, but I, we got, got. Have everything ready for tomorrow.
Worst case scenario is we could, we could have a call meeting on the twenty ninth to approve the budget and that would give us an extra Saturday if we needed it. Correct, Bo, I'm not looking at the calendar, but is that right?
That's right, because then you'd have the twelfth, the nineteenth and the twenty sixth.
Yes, you could have the call meeting on the twenty ninth.
We could do it that way, or you just can put the figures in the budget and we just prove the orders on the eighth of July, you know, either, either way. It, it just, the money, it'd just be in the budget on a certain line item.
The eighth of July.
Proven the.
I mean, the thirteenth.
Proven the order, what?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, oh, I'm sorry.
Thirteenth or twenty seventh.
Well, we'd have to have the budget passed by June thirtieth.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure, if you're gonna do it for the next three Saturdays, that would be June the twelfth, the nineteenth and the twenty sixth, right? If you can't get it for the fifth.
Right, right, yeah.
And then, then you have a call meeting on the twenty ninth. So how, how did we get into July?
So if you didn't have a call meeting, the next meeting would be, the regular meeting would be the, the July thirteenth, if you didn't have a call meeting.
Well, what I'm saying, money-wise, this won't take effect until January at the budget. So money-wise, it ain't gonna take no effect, we just need to have it in the budget. Pass the order, I mean, that's what, that's what I was saying. Ain't nothing like July first, we gotta have the money.
Yeah, I don't know if I would do that or not.
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
Because I'm not sure, because the budget is an ordinance. And I wouldn't want anybody to claim that you. Adopted it without running the advertising. Even though, and I know what you're saying, you're gonna come back and do it officially. If you don't approve it, it's not, it's gonna sit in the budget, but it's not gonna. But it might be cleaner if we.
If we had a call meeting.
We just, yeah, or if we, yeah, if we cannot do it.
How difficult would it get, be to get what I need for the ad to run, the text?
I guess you'd have to go find that thing about thirty years ago. Best, best of all. I can, we can get it in the morning.
If you got a date.
There's gotta be a go-by out there somewhere, hasn't it?
That's a GMA go-by, I'm sure.
I bet you're right. Verbiage that we would know.
No, no, it's just, all the statute says is that. Action shall not be taken until notice of intent to take the action has been published in a newspaper of general circulation, destination, county and municipal corporation at least once a week. For three consecutive weeks immediately preceding the week, at least the action is taken.
It's, it's an ordinance?
So it'd work out well.
Would be an ordinance.
Budget adoption would be an ordinance.
Budget adoption is an ordinance, this might be a, a resolution.
It, it would be an ordinance because it's set out in our code of ordinances. I think the salary is set there.
And that, they'll probably tell you when it was increased. To where you, if you want to pull, if you want to pull.
I'll look.
If I can look here.
So we're thinking in the nineties?
Oh, I'm, I'm not, I've, I've, I have the one on the pension plan. I've looked at it. I don't know that I've got the one on the salary.
Ms. Walden, you said it was four years after you came in, so what year would that have been?
I came in in ninety seven.
Two thousands.
No, no, it's salary.
I came in in nineteen, in nineteen ninety seven is when I came in.
I think that's, I think that's pension.
Pension, Jimmy said you have it out there, that's pension, yeah. He said you already had it out.
Yeah, I, I.
Up the pension thing, it was twenty five and we upped it to forty.
Right.
And I don't remember there being a raise there, I just remember us up in the pension plan.
Well, is.
You in agreement with?
Yes, ma'am, I, we'll just, we'll get the figures in the budget draft so that they can be seen in terms of the totals. So I've got those notes, let me just confirm. Council from five hundred, eight hundred, mayor pro temp from six hundred to nine hundred, and mayor from seven hundred to a thousand. And then the pension from forty to fifty.
To the next.
Well, I, I just, I wondered if anybody had any additional questions about any of the, the position approvals or new positions or across the board. Staff increase or any, any questions or comments about any of those, because obviously if any of those occur, we'll need to work those numbers into the budget as well.
I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, with the, the new budget preparation information sheet that you sent out this last one.
Yes, ma'am.
With the elimination of the fifty percent for the twenty five dollars hours and up.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just. It's not a permanent, this is something that we can come back to the budget to make changes if needed.
You mean, just, let me make sure I'm understanding your question. With the, with the top tier, are you asking if we left it out now? Could we come back and add it later on? Am I understanding your question correctly?
All right, right, the one that you sent out is the elimination, which is showing sixteen employees, right?
That's correct, between general and water.
Right. So I know you did this to show the difference between if we had the fifty percent and not the fifty percent, right?
The fifty cent increase, that's correct.
I'm sorry, fifty cents, right, I'm sorry, I said fifty dollars, I'm sorry, fifty cents, all right. So. So what we doing, just comparing right now?
That is correct.
Totally saying eliminating.
The, the figure there is just so, Ms. Shan Holster asked about the savings across the board increase if that, if that top tier was backed out. And that was the reason we communicated that information.
That, that would be the, the savings on that.
That is correct.
Roughly about forty thousand dollars.
That is correct.
Didn't we say though that they would get it like the first of January or did we not say that on the fifty?
That was my question.
I think that's what was. That's what we're saying, that we, that we would move that to January. January, once we figure out where we were financially.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, that was it.
I, I have a question, Hank, about this information, not the information that you have, but this other information that you sent us. This letter that was signed? Okay. So it was stated on there that there have been some employees that have been employed for the last twenty four to. So, so from, in two to three years, they haven't received a pay increase? That's what it said.
I, I don't, I don't think. I didn't say all the information, the letter was necessarily correct, I just wanted you all to see the letter.
Okay, I, because I was, I was like, whoa, that's not.
And I'm doing this purely from memory, but I believe the last, other than bonus, other than a one-time bonus. I believe the last across-the-board salary increase was in FY nineteen. Is that right, Shay? So that would have been two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget year.
Yeah, so we haven't got anything in twenty or this year. I don't know when in nineteen that was, because it could have been.
I'm thinking maybe the last one came in in January.
January of.
FY nineteen budget year, so January of nineteen.
I know we gave bonuses two years in a row.
That's correct.
That was nineteen.
Well, personally, I, I'm looking at this and if I'm figuring right, the, we got anywhere from a three and a half percent increase, which is everybody twenty and, twenty dollars an hour and under. Up to a two percent increase, which would be for the fifty cents for twenty five dollars, and that's just setting it at twenty dollars. People that are lower than twenty dollars an hour at seventy cents increase would get a higher percentage of an increase. I, firstly, I want to see us go ahead and do all of this. We haven't had anything that is going to stick with employees, bonuses don't stick. They just, you know, you either give them or you don't. And it's, it's been, we've, we've had, while the economy has slowed down, we've, we still have had price increases across the board. All you got to do is go to the grocery store, to the gas station. And I just, I, I feel like they are deserving. These, these people get out there, whether they're department heads or just started this year, they all get out there and go at it. I see them do it every day.
I'm, I'm not questioning the salary increase. I'm just trying to, looking at this information because some of it is kind of disturbing now, you know, whether, whether it's right or wrong. We'll have to try to find out, but then when they were talking about, I thought that, and, and I guess that's just me thinking. I thought that after people make their six months probationary period, that they get a salary increase.
That, that has only been the case since I have been in this role.
It used to be the case, I don't know what happened to it before that, but I know when I was here, that was the case. So I don't know when it stopped being the case and then started back with you. But I know I've heard you mention it, so for them to say that that doesn't happen, I know I've heard you talk about it. And I just, in my mind, I thought that's the way it was, because that's the way it used to be. And then when I read this and it said that, you know, you're not even getting a probationary, you know, a, a pay increase, then I thought, hmm, that, that doesn't sound right. Because I know I've heard you talk about it.
And so, so the, the folks who have been employed. Within the last twenty-four months, because at the end of this month will be when y'all allowed me to be here in interim and then permanent role. And I started that as interim, because if you remember, I fed y'all that information. So, so anybody employed within the last twenty-four months should have gotten a probationary ending increase. But thirty-six months, I, I can't speak to that.
But I, yeah, but I was just shocked when they said twenty-four to thirty-six, because I know what, what had been taking place since then. So I was, I was really surprised.
So twenty, twenty-four months and less, there should have been an increase at the end of the six-month probationary period.
And then someone said that they couldn't even get the raise, because they came in just before they got the raise or something like, and that's been. There was a whole lot of stuff going on. I, I'm just gonna be honest with you all, that there was a whole lot of stuff going on. And I don't want to get into previous administration or anything like that, but, yeah, I've, I've heard employees say that, you know, they, that. Because they came in like from this month to that month, and then even after they made their six months, it was like, well, you came in in, in December and, and so you didn't. You know, there's just all kinds of things, so there, yeah, you're right, there, there are people that probably didn't get it and I'm, I'm so sorry. Because like I said, I just assumed that was the norm, because that's what used to be the norm, under the pay, under the. The personnel policy, so I, you know. That's another thing, we have got to get some, we've got to get to work on, on that. I mean, that, that policy needs to be updated, you need to, we need to get a committee to. To start looking at that. But, you know, I'm, I'm like Steve, I don't have a problem with the way we set it up for the, the. The seventy, sixty and fifty cents increase.
I don't have a problem with that either. I think we need to go ahead and do it for everybody.
I feel the same. We only, we only talking about sixteen employees that are twenty-five and up.
And six of those, six of those would be coming out of an enterprise fund, so that's only, only ten of them would be out of the general fund.
Okay.
Move to keep your memorial with your staff going and hoping that, that'll help keep some. And, and, and then they need to know that, you know, they need to give us time to have us out and look at all that other stuff that we talked about last week. Where, because I, I know they mentioned something about looking at years of service and all that stuff. They need, they, they don't even need to get, department heads don't even need to get into that kind of stuff.
And, and as I, as I, as I think I mentioned to y'all in the email, I'm fairly certain I did, this was a very good meeting. They gave me this letter that day and they either were not aware or hadn't, hadn't understood that we were talking about across-the-board increase for everybody. And ba- based on that conversation, you know, I said to them, if, if we do that, then we, then salary studies and other things that camp, mayor and council may be looking at. Could possibly take care of some of these.
Okay, the other question is these additional personnels. We, we haven't really pinpointed where we are with that. All these requests for additional personnel.
Facility maintenance worker.
Say what now? Yes.
I'm gonna keep on preaching that position till we can get it.
I don't, I don't want to go into a whole lot of detail, but there's been some things that have been talked about with one particular department head, actually just last Thursday. That may enable. Some changes in the central garage, so if y'all will give me a little while longer to delve into that. And I will send you all an email about what the end result of that would be, but we, we may be able to do something with that based on some other changes that we're looking at.
Especially Hank, I, I think sometimes we get a little. Overzealous in trying to make sure we don't create anything, any new monies or anything of that nature. And we end up shortchanging somebody somewhere along the line when we kind of move people around and, and let's just be very aware of that, please.
We will.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Griffin.
And y'all, and y'all know when I email it to you, I'm gonna. I'm gonna tell you how to build that watch when you ask me what time it is, so you'll know, you'll know the entire story and plan to be able to question anything at that point in time if necessary.
Do we need to go down these by like A, B, C to talk about the additional? And I'm just going by the additional personnel.
Then jump to I then.
Okay. Jumped all the way down to I. Okay, let's talk about I.
That, that's what I think Hank has mentioned. Yeah, there were some that were moved from there, that wreck, or is that cemeteries and.
They were moved from streets and sidewalks to stormwater.
Okay, so that, that's where we would potentially have a short staff. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is what you're talking about doing with central garage is gonna affect this?
Uh, no ma'am.
Okay, so we do need to talk about it.
You know, you had mentioned somebody being able to spend some time in the downtown area policing or, you know, cleaning up a little bit more than, than what has been done here lately. But also, I'm assuming that would give extra help out on a day-to-day basis?
Didn't we used to have someone that just stayed downtown?
We did, prior to those five being moved to stormwater.
Freddie, wasn't that?
Fred, one.
We did.
So that was one of those, that was one of those that got moved?
Well, that specific position did not get moved, but since that number of staff people were decreased by five, it, it did not provide the man-hours for someone to stay downtown the entire time.
So the question becomes whether we're trying to fund two additional this year or one additional.
Right. The initial request was, was two, and then as I did with everything else, I just went in and broke it out into one or three or ever, how many the requests were.
You know, since two was taken away from street and sidewalk and they are short, why not look at two additional workers?
I'm good with that.
Because eventually the stormwater is gonna balance out. They pay for one of them?
Well, stormwater is, stormwater is currently paying for those positions that moved over there now. But when that occurred, the personnel cost in public works was decreased. So adding, adding the two, I'm not saying yay or nay for me, but adding the two will mean the increased personnel cost for public works.
But for the last year and a half, it's been down.
That is correct.
So when we talk about, okay, the two for streets and sidewalks, and then I see in stormwater, they were asking for a superintendent and two additional laborers?
Yes.
I mean a supervisor.
A supervisor, yes.
So how many do they have in stormwater already? I guess I could look at my.
Currently have five.
I think so.
I think that's right. Hang on a minute, look at my list.
So who is doing the supervising right now for the stormwater?
And that was my next question, Dr. Lee.
Stormwater is asking for a whole lot of stuff here, and post-street and sidewalk, just going by wayside.
Well, the stormwater, in terms of the overall department head, it falls under the public works department head. Five is correct for stormwater. One crew leader, two heavy equipment operators, a regular equipment operator, and one laborer.
So street and sidewalks have, currently have six. A superintendent, a crew leader, heavy equipment operator, equipment operator, and two workers. So you would change that, you would add, so they would have a total of eight staff then?
That is correct, with the increases being two street maintenance workers.
So then, and then, and stormwater. Where is stormwater?
Stormwater is on the back page. Not the very back, but the back of, back of the approved positions. I think it shows as page 132, because it came out of the budget.
So under stormwater, you have a crew leader, heavy equipment operator, and equipment operators and laborers. And I guess my question is, you have a public works director and a public works supervisor. So you have a crew leader in both, in all areas, so the supervisor couldn't supervise stormwater?
You mean the public works supervisor, supervising public works and, and, or the public works and stormwater?
Well, I mean, the public works supervisor is there. You got a superintendent and a crew leader on the streets and sidewalks.
Right.
And you have a crew leader under there, and I'm just asking, so what does this public works supervisor do then?
I have not, I have not seen the org chart associated with these requests. I don't, I don't know that I can really answer that.
I guess I'm trying to figure out the supervisor.
The public works supervisor should be directly.
Over the stormwater.
Over, over everything in public works and stormwater.
And stormwater. So they, that means that they would have a supervisor.
That's correct.
And that's why I'm trying to justify the supervisor, the additional supervisor.
I thought at one time we was talking about when we did that or added that back to Tim, it was putting a little more work on Tim. Extra works that he wouldn't get, be getting paid for initially, when you put him over all of that, public works and stormwater. Didn't we initially talk about that? You're not about to remember that but me? I don't remember. I, I thought we did, but.
What is the difference between the crew leader and the supervisor?
That, that's what I'm asking.
The crew leader is actually on the job site. The supervisor may be rotating between job sites, checking with the crew leader, based on the org chart that's currently in place.
So what does the superintendent there with streets and sidewalks, what do they do? Because you got a superintendent and a crew leader there.
You may, you may have more than one street and sidewalk project going on at the time. And the crew leader would be with, with the main group that's doing a project, where the superintendent probably would be rotating, checking on the work of the street maintenance workers. The street maintenance workers pretty much work alone. I mean, that, you know, they're on the lawnmower, they're running weed eaters, they're, they're doing those things. So the crew leader would be, for example, with streets and sidewalks, they might be pouring new sidewalk, and the crew leader would stay on that project until that, that is finished. The superintendent, based on the org chart, could come through while that sidewalk was being poured, but also be out checking with street maintenance workers who may be mowing or, or whatever they may be doing. The other thing too is occasionally, occasionally there'll be some crossover with these folks from a training standpoint and also from, depending on what's going on during the year. For example, obviously in the wintertime, you have less mowing that needs to be done, but you have a lot more limbs and leaves to be picked up. So one of the street maintenance workers may temporarily be on the limb truck or the leaf truck, depending on what's going on during that particular time of the year.
And I can, I mean, I can understand, I can see the stormwater as, asking for one additional laborer because, because they only have one.
And, and with stormwater, you know, the, the equipment operator will oftentimes serve as a laborer too. It's just that their knowledge base obviously is higher than, than a laborer would be. So, so you really could kind of consider the equipment operator and the laborer as two laborer positions on most stormwater projects.
So what, on our stormwater projects? Are we able to handle them or we contracting a lot of them out?
We have handled all of them but one. We contracted Stevens Court out because it was not a major project, but it was in really, really bad shape. There was a lot of rehab there. But we have, we have, we have taken care of all the others that we've had. They just recently finished one on Pine Valley. They had a large one on Leo Court at Reeve Circle. They had a major one on the west end of McIntosh Street, just before you get to the cemetery. They are looking at a couple of major ones in Carrington Woods, based on the Simonton engineering information that, that was shared with y'all at a, at a meeting sometime back. And I've asked Tim to go ahead and phase those in with, with his staff doing that work. So all of them except the Stevens Court one have been done in-house.
Let me ask something because I'm trying to see how we can, how we really can make some things happen. I notice with the street and sidewalk and also with stormwater, we're talking about either one supervisor, one superintendent, and a crew leader. But with cemeteries, we have two supervisors. Do we need two? Two crew leaders.
And while you're asking about cemetery, do we still contract that grass cutting out?
We do. You all will be approving a new contract.
So we do better with that.
The contract, the contract grass cutting, the majority of that is just in the summertime. The remainder of the year, our folks do it, and they are also responsible for picking up trash before the contractor comes through. They are responsible for any, any leaf and limb pickup that occurs. So, so yes, the majority of the mowing during the mowing season is done by the contractor. But then those, those folks that are assigned to the cemetery crew would be doing that during the other times of the year.
So I guess my question is, I'm like Dr. Lee, the two, so they have two supervisors, and, but the cemetery people don't work with the other public works staff? Like, like stormwater and they all don't?
I can't say for sure, but if they don't, they should.
They should, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm thinking when you got two supervisors here and you need another supervisor over there, then one of those supervisors need to be over there. Especially since they, you know, their, their, their work is sort of, I mean, not necessarily seasonal, but you got your grass cutting contracted out, so, but then you got equipment, two equipment operators where they only have one over here in these other areas, so what?
And two crew leaders?
Uh, two crew leaders, so, so why aren't these people being shared with public works?
Well, they are all public works employees, but they should, they could be, they could be shared between departments when they're public works.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Excuse me, with, with, not departments, public works is department with, with.
Right.
Different areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, maybe an org chart from them would kind of, with everything that comes under public works would help us under, you know, help, help it, help you figure it out.
What I'll do is I'll make sure you all get an org chart as it currently is and with any of the new positions that may be, may be added.
Okay. Now with, with the wastewater, two additional wastewater treatment operators.
I think we'll be fine with that, Mr. Huster, if we can upgrade SCADA with ARPA money, which I think we'll be able to.
That's what I was gonna ask you. Do you think we can wait on those?
I think so. I've talked to Mr. Haddon and, I mean, you know, just to show how important SCADA is, that's what occurred Sunday night. But, but it wasn't our SCADA system, it was electricity. Some type of feathered animal flew into the transformer at the North Industrial Tank and completely took the electricity out of the SCADA system. And so, so nobody was aware that the North Industrial Tank was not filling up when it got, when it got empty until, until we, we had a call in Allenwood, and I talked to the mayor and she said it was in our neighborhood too, and I knew we had some tank issues there somewhere, so. But I, I just, I really believe, based on what I've read so far, that SCADA is gonna be considered infrastructure for ARPA. And will there come a time when EPA makes us have somebody there 24/7 probably? But, but the, the other benefits that we'll get from upgrading SCADA, which by the way, is, you all probably know based on the fact you approved the contract last week, the contract that you approved for turnip seed last week is a contract dealing with the belt press, which is what we highlighted, but it also includes recommendations for upgrading the SCADA system too. So we're already gonna have that data when the time comes to possibly pull the trigger on it with ARPA money. You know, the other, the other thing to, to look at too is for, for any, any positions where there were multiple positions, you know, requested, if we determine that even one of those positions is, is necessary, we could do that, and then that could be something that we could come back and look at in January for a second position if, if we needed to, based on how things are going with the one position. But I, you know, I have not prioritized these positions. I, I just know based on, based on the calls that I get, one additional person in streets and sidewalks would be extremely important, especially if that allowed us to have somebody downtown more regularly. And I don't know, you know, I don't know what we're gonna do about trash, that's.
Huge problem.
And it's a problem for everybody. I mean, it is, the city manager's list serve is just full of everybody having the same issue, so. Obviously, our folks pick up trash before the right of ways are mowed, and then as soon, I mean, you know, as quickly as they can get that. But I'm hoping now that things are getting a little bit back to normal, especially with the courts, that we can start looking at community service work again for part of that.
And it's just, and it's just people. I mean, you write, write behind people and they, they bought something at McDonald's and they just throw it out there, throw the whole bag out, out the window, just no consideration whatsoever to the fact that somebody's gotta pick it up.
Just assume that we approve every position. They everyone asks for how much extra money with that?
I just happen to have that figure right here, Mr. Musk.
About a million, wasn't it?
One million, fifty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents.
So we talking about one, one million dollar over and beyond what we use, we use in budget? Now the court just, how can we come up with that million?
At least the buck, they start writing a lot of tickets. A lot more.
No, because they get me. They would get me, Steve, if they did that.
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to. Well, I guess, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is that realist, how many new, how many new position we talking about with, with, that they request overall?
Across the board?
Yeah, across the board.
Four, five, seven. Nine. Ten. Ten, twelve, fourteen. Fifteen, sixteen, sixteen.
That's what I said, about fifteen. That's a lot, but no sir.
So, I guess.
So, if we, if we're gonna take care of wastewater with SCADA, that pulls two off. Okay, so that's down to fourteen.
What we need, what we need, four new sworn offices, I mean, four, four new offices right away?
My thing is, with the officer, we can get two, and where, where the high demand is, at night shift, or just day shift, where, where they're needed.
I think it's, I think it's across the board. We, we, you know, one of the things Chief Swiger talked about was increased calls at Central State, and those, those seem to typically occur mostly at night, especially from a trespassing standpoint.
Is it more done when, when college students are here?
It is. It is. It is. And we've got a, we've got a couple of entities out there now too that they call the PD when they need a report to go along with their internal report. It, it may not necessarily be an investigative piece, as much as it is the PD having to go out and get the, the information and generate the report, so that. And I just, I mean, I'll just go ahead and say, say what, one, one that occurs fairly often is in the Correct Life Building, the Bostic Building. It evidently is their SOP that when, when they have a potential criminal issue inside the building there, most of the time, staff will say they took, they're gonna take care of it, but they have to have the report from the PD to include in their report. We get some of that in the war veterans home, but not as much as we do at Correct Life. And I think that's just, I think that's just based on the fact of, the, the two, the two entities where those folks come from.
That, that couldn't be considered an additional service to them?
For impact fees? I think so. I'm, I'm not sure that ship hadn't sailed at this point in time, but that's something that we would have to get Mr. Jordan involved in the conversation, but you know, impact, the, the requirements that you have to meet for impact fees are very specific. And we, we would just have to see how that, how that falls into those requirements.
So, money wise, not to break the bank, what, can we possibly stay here?
Well, I mean, anything that we do would be coming out of the fund balance, which, which concerns me a little bit. Because we're not generating any additional revenue. My other heartburn with doing anything with fund balance, at least this year, is, is, you know, we, we've still got a little ways before we get through the, the, the full year of, of water system transfers, and all those kinds of things, and the impact that's gonna have on the enterprise fund. So, you know, I, I, I don't know. I, I don't know that I have a, necessarily have a figure, Mr. Mullins, but I think we just all need to be aware that anything we do will be, at least for this particular budget year, unless something has changed, when, when millage rate time comes, would be coming out of fund balance.
One meal is equal to what?
Didn't you say, Hank, in our last meeting, that something about, that the department heads were okay with waiting until the first of the year to?
Based on the conversation that I had with them, Ms. Walden, and that, where that memo that I shared with y'all came from, that was the general, that was the general consensus in that, especially since we were looking at the across the board increase. But we, we will need to come back and look at that in January.
Steve.
Your question?
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chambers, I did not answer your question. One meal is equal to about four hundred thousand. And let me, let me clarify an answer that I gave you, Mr. Mullins. Any increase would either have to come from fund balance, or it would have to be covered by a possible larger transfer from water and sewer. But now, you know, the, the, the the utility maintenance employees, and if you were to look at the wastewater treatment operators, although I don't think we need to at this point in time, the utility maintenance additional staff would come from water and sewer. So, almost two hundred and five thousand of that one million dollar, almost one point, one million dollar figure that I mentioned, would actually come from water and sewer anyway.
You still got nine hundred thousand coming, coming out of general fund, that's gonna have to get it from either water fund or fund balance, like you said, so that, that doesn't help. And I know y'all don't want, and you know, you need three meals of taxes to make up that million. No, you don't wanna go there. We don't wanna go there at all. All right, times. Tough this season.
Well, and, and you know, while, while revenue wise, we have, we have survived the pandemic time, as I've shared with you all a, a couple of different times, so much of what I'm still reading says that some of that, some of that lag may occur, you know, up to two years after the fact. We can use, and, and this goes back to sustainability, but just as, as a conversation piece, there, there's a formula about as long as this table that we'll have to plug the numbers into and see. But some of the, some of the ARPA money could be used for revenue replacement. If we saw in the, in the coming fiscal year that that revenue did in fact go away because of the lag time on the pandemic, we could look at that, not so much in the first tranche of money, but, but possibly in the, the second tranche. But I, I don't know, Ms. Dancy and I have, have played with some figures a little bit, and, and I, I don't know that that's gonna be much more than maybe two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars. For, not, not, not our entire allocation, but in terms of revenue replacement. The other thing too is, I mean, just, once again, sustainability is my concern. But we, we do still have some, some CARES Act money left over, which is, is general fund money that would not technically come from fund balance for this year, but, but once, once again, we go back to the sustainability piece.
What do you do the following year?
Right.
To be able to fund all of those positions, if you create all, all what, thirteen of those positions this year?
And we borrow for Peter and pay Paul.
Exactly.
And, and Paul can get expensive.
Yeah, Paul might, Paul wanted to sell our increase too. Can't let him go.
So, if, if we have department heads that are okay with status quo, and we're planning on doing a pay scale study, and we're gonna look at all of this again in January, somewhere along the line, we've got to look at what we're gonna do as far as public safety is concerned, and what's happening all around us. That's the money that's gonna have to be, come up with, you know, regardless of whether or not you add in additional personnel.
Well, one, one of the things, Mr. Chambers, that I think would, would help drive the potential for increased spending in public safety is annexation, because obviously that creates a, a greater area for police to patrol. So, I think that's something that we could possibly look at with some potential low hanging fruit in terms of some areas for possible annexation that might help fund some of that after the beginning of the new year.
Restroom break.
I wanted to say the same thing, Mr. Steve.
Well, let, let me, let me, how about, I mean, we obviously can continue the discussion, but I think one of the things that may be helpful to us, if we get the org chart information from public works, and we'll figure in the, the dollars that we talked about tonight, and, and include those in the new budget printout. And I'll get that information to you, and those will be the things that I think will drive what may be our final discussion next week, in terms of which of these positions, new positions, we think we wanna add. And I, I'm not trying to squelch discussion, Mayor, but it sounds like we're, to me, we're kind of at a point where I've gotta feed y'all some more information before final decisions can be made.
Yes, I think so. And I think you and Ms. Dancy has, have done an extraordinary job.
Yes, they have.
Ms. Dancy has done an extraordinary job. She, she, she gives me the numbers and, and deals with my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dancy.
So, is everybody okay with Mr. Griffin going back and reworking that? If you have any more questions, you get them to him, and then next week, we'll talk about this some more. Everyone's okay with it?
That's fine with me.
There, there's no, there's nothing else planned for the work session next week, except budget discussion, so we will have I may need to share something with y'all in closed session. It should take about five minutes, but I don't know that yet, so.
It might work if you did, like you did it last week, put it on the end, the closed session.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
All right. Well, if there is nothing else to discuss tonight, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Did you get that, Mr. Newsom?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank y'all. See you in a week.
All the time we spend together.